Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? So this is a continuation of our budget workshop that we had a week ago. So at that budget workshop, I think there were a couple of maybe clearer themes coming from the board. One was that we needed to get into the recommendations from the priority-based budget and give you some clearer guidance. What are some of the things that we saw in the priority-based budget that we have problems with? What are some of the things in the priority-based budget that we want to make sure, you know, remain? But I think it's the responsibility of the board now to give more clear guidance to the staff. And I think we came out of that meeting with a sense that board members have some ideas that were not reflected in the priority-based budget necessarily, that we want to put on the table and get analysis of the staff. And I think maybe the third point was that we know that this is a real time crunch, that we've got our March 9 meeting coming up where our goal is to approve a second interim report. So we've got a lot of work that needs to be done in a very short period of time. So what I'm hoping for in this meeting today, and just the schedule of the meeting, is that we're going to go till 11 o'clock. We've got the laurels for leaders or leaders for laurels meeting right after that, and then we'll reconvene at 2:00. What I'm hoping we can do this morning is get from the board members especially as clear feedback and a set of ideas that we want the staff to analyze as possible, and then we can get deeper into the analysis of the priority-based budget later this afternoon. But I think this time, it's important for the board to be as clear as we can be. So in order to start that conversation, I wanted to just get a slide up on the, one of the screens that I think Amy has prepared, that just, you know, this is our current analysis of what our hole is, what our budget gap is. And so as board members, you know, give feedback or make recommendations, it's in the context of a hole that we're trying to fill and what that hole is. I don't think that's in our packet.
Because that would be an important piece of paper.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's...
Can we get a copy of it?
I think what Amy's putting up here right now is the...
No, but I can't see that.
In just a few minutes, if you give me a couple of minutes, they'll make copies.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I can't.
This is a small spreadsheet that the board officers asked for. We just built it and we'll make copies.
Yeah. Yeah, but it doesn't have a lot filled in right now. But that's right, I hope we can keep this screen up. So I want to actually then, I know that the board, that the staff has a lot of information, but I think it's important that we take some time right now for the board to go through and give some clarity. So let's go through maybe a couple of rounds, and why don't we start with Ms. Nakamura?
Mr. DeBeck wants to start? Okay. All right. I'm not comfortable with either brace or the work that was done by the committee to come up with the budget issues. And I'm going to just say what I think my priorities are. First of all, there are, for some reason, there are items that I believe should be cut far before things like OSL or kids' activities, programs that kids are in. The problem I get is I've got multiple recommendations that have, for example, restricted dollars and regular, you know, whatever you want to call the other dollars, okay? So then when somebody says we're going to save some restricted money, okay. That's really not where I think all the losses are, but so that's a problem. But I'm going to just say, I don't care what the categories are, here's what I believe. I do not want to cut any program for kids, any program for kids, until it's been evaluated. We haven't got a hands-on evaluation on a program, so any kind of cuts on programs will be based on somebody's opinion or lobbying. I don't like that. So we got ourselves into this pickle. We should not just automatically make some kind of cuts because they look expedient because they didn't have as much of lobbying as anybody else. So I'm going to propose, before we cut any programs for kids, we cut any memberships that this school district has. That's board memberships and any associations, CSBA, NSBA, I don't care, great cities, all of them, okay? Secondly, that we cut down and prohibit, without individual approval, any travel for board members or staff. And that we cut all lobbying and public information. If there's evaluation on those, so be it. But if there's none, then they're dead as far as I'm concerned, okay? So public information lobbying, central office supervision, all the way down from the superintendent to the principal, all of it. Any curriculum, the same thing, unless it's mandated by law. So that's, all those are, as far as I'm concerned, are highest priorities for cuts before any programs for kids. Now, if you want to then go for pay cuts, I would say that I would go as high as or more than 10% cut for any person who doesn't face a kid at least once a day. And then I, you know, I know all this is bargainable, but then some lesser cut for those that do face the kids every day. And I want to see the numbers on those things I just mentioned, because we got, you know, $50,000 for the membership, we got another $50,000, $70,000, maybe $100,000 worth of travel. And I can't see that the travel, multiple travel to places to get lobbying, for example, has given us any more results than districts that don't lobby. If somebody can show me where those things have paid off, not whether they should pay off, but whether they have paid off, then I might reconsider. But I can't see any reason for us to maintain a public information office or lobbying or any kind of activities that are outreach to our community when we cut programs for kids. I'm done.
Ms. Jackson?
I think John was at my house this weekend, we were throwing these things up. I echo some of the same sentiment. We have to protect our schools. That's priority. Our children are while we are here. And I think that many other items, the outreach part, I do feel is important. I think that those budgets have to be trimmed, not necessarily eliminated. I do believe that the power to get things done, whether we like it or not, and John did ask for information, and we can provide that information, as to whether or not having a voice in NSBA, CSBA, and the like is valuable to us. The question becomes, what happens when you're silent? And we know that silence is not always golden. Sometimes when you're silenced, you get left out. But it is our responsibility, though, to ensure that we don't leave our students and children out, but that's not necessarily true at state and federal levels, because they do. They actually, whether we like it or not, they do respond to pressure. And looking at some of the questions that I have asked, and certainly I think that we also need to look at how we can partner with other entities and how other entities are doing their jobs, i.e. the county. I know that we are a very, very large school district, and in the past, we have done things solely by ourselves. I don't think this is a time for us to be isolation. I think this is a time for public entities to come together and what does a county have that we can piggyback on and/or vice versa? Is there something that we can offer them that could help them have cost savings as well? The other item I think that is extremely important is that, again, there's a lot of ideas floating around with the staff. And I don't mean just the staff sitting around here, I mean out in the field. And I don't know if we had an opportunity to solicit that input and give it to the board. Not select which pieces the board gets, but giving it all to the board. And the reason for that is because when we get these emails and people saying, well, why didn't you consider something, many times it's because we didn't even know it, okay? We didn't even know it was sent up the food chain. And so we had to be able to have access to all of the things that is provided to the staff. If something's provided to the staff and you think it's not, you know, the best, it's better that you do what you did here and start putting comments down. Now, some of these comments in here, we may have to challenge, but I'm just seeing this morning for the first time, this list of response to the questions, but I'm sure that as I go through it, I'll have additional questions. But Mr. DeBeck, what I do agree is that, number one, children come first. We shouldn't be cutting programs when we haven't cut everything we possibly could do at the administrative level. We just can't afford to do it. Number two, we need to look at our sister people, our charter school systems, and see how they're faring and what lessons we can learn from some of them. I know I have a meeting scheduled next week to talk with some of them about what they're doing during this particular time. Now, I know there's a difference between being regulated and unregulated, but maybe some of the things that they're doing, we can actually learn from. And I think it's a time that everybody's at the table and we're not forced into isolation again alone, okay?
Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Nakamura?
I'm trying to listen to my fellow board members very carefully, because as I sent in an email to someone, any one of the five of us up here could balance this budget in a heartbeat. It's not that we don't know how to do it or how to add, subtract, how to figure these things out. Most of us have been here, you know, a significant amount of time, and the two newcomers aren't so new anymore. They've been through a really rough year. We've all evaluated programs, we've all evaluated systems. The issue is trying to find where is our common thread? Where can we make these decisions? I agree with my colleagues in that where people are working with children, where programs for kids are concerned, that are going to move their education forward, I don't believe that we should cut that. And I know that's a broad brush, and that can be interpreted. What's been interesting to me throughout this process is the interpretation of that. Personally, for me, the VAPA department, as you all know very well, I don't want to see that changed. Once that's gone, you can't reconstruct that, and that provides a service. This is a particular population of itinerant teachers who go around from school to school to school, and they need to be coordinated, and those need to be organized. It's, this is not the same as, you know, social studies teachers or, you know, math teachers or any of the others whom I would not recommend. But this particular function needs a coordinating voice. And in addition, you know, repairing instruments, there are all sorts of things, going for grants, this is a particular department, that actually generates money. It can bring money into this district. I think we should keep that voice, particularly even regionally. The gate department, I think all of us up here have a concern about that. It is particularly for keeping ADA within our school district, for actually advancing students. I have to tell you, the gate department, I have a child that's difficult to teach. The gate department was the only department that did anything for him, out of this entire district, including some of the classroom teachers day to day. That gate department saves kids every single day, and it also advances our society. So I don't agree with the cuts to the gate department. I don't agree with cuts to OSL. If I had to prioritize them, I would probably put them in order of Camp Palomar first, protect that. You know, there's a photograph in this district at Franklin Elementary School of kids getting on the bus in 1957. In 1957, a bunch of kids getting on a bus to go up to Camp Palomar. That's a tradition within this district. It's something every child looks forward to, you know, especially as we are learning more and more about kids being outside and the importance of the environmental education and so on and so forth, not to mention, of course, what happens with race human relations. I don't support the individual, schools can do it. I think you need to get out of sight, and I've seen the program. I've gone up there, I've listened, and I've heard, you know, the sort of training and education that goes on with our kids, it's superb, and yet it's put in a very, very supportive environment. Throwing that away not only means throwing it away for this school district, it means throwing it away for all of the other school districts within the region. Because we're the main customer, we're the largest provider, it means it's going to go away for everybody regionally, because no one else is going to be able to support that. OSL, as a native Californian, I feel very strongly it's important with Old Town that we educate our kids about California history. I know that some of you who are from out of town don't believe that California has history, but in fact, we do. You know, and Old Town is a really critical component to reaching out for that. The Balboa Park museums, you know, the Balboa Park program, as families are going on fewer and fewer vacations, you know, this is about the only thing some of these kids are going to get, as far as any sort of social, you know, benefit from our city. We have a beautiful, beautiful park, and I think that our children, particularly those children who parents don't have cars, who don't have the ability to go and see what is right in the heart of our own city, we have an obligation to bring that to our kids. So, you know, as far as the OSL program. Looking at this, there were some things that just didn't make sense to me, and I could do a blow-by-blow, but I want to call out a couple of them. We're going to cut dropout prevention, but we're going to keep adult education. We're supposed to be at K through 12. Dropout prevention, I think, keeps average daily attendance, it brings money into the school district. I think dropout prevention is very important. I believe there are other, and as is adult education. But adult education, there are other agencies that do that, such as the Community College District. So I'm, you know, I sort of wonder, are we really taking a look at what other agencies are doing? I think our dropout prevention program and the push that we've made in the last couple of years has been superb. We've identified people, students who have left the district, and we have really made an effort to bring some of them back in. It makes a difference in those very young student lives. With the dropout prevention, well, at any rate, I just, I wonder about the adult education, and I don't mean to denigrate that, I just think there are other agencies that do it. Again, and I'm wondering why we're keeping a barbecue crew in catering? I, you know, that's $69,000. I'm, you know, I love the catering department, but, you know, it's food services, why are we keeping a barbecue crew? But there are those sorts of, I just didn't see a real, there were just certain points, as I said, every single board member could go through this and call threads out, but those sorts of examples. And again, I'm going to go back to telephones in the classroom. You know, it was, the calculation, it's my understanding is that it's $25 a phone, and, you know, if you add up, you know, all of the classrooms, we've got $6,000 or $7,000, I think it came to $2.1 million. Now, it came back this weekend, someone says, oh, no, 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 that's also including the central office. Well, that doesn't include the central office telephones, unless we've, unless the base number of $25 per telephone per month is inaccurate, which is a possibility. We still have $7,000, you know, if you just do the math, that's still $2.1 million. And even if it's a million dollars, even if it's $1.5 million, that could save one of the camp programs. That could, you know, we could spend that money on VAPA, we could spend that money on the gate department. If people would give up their telephones in their classroom, those people particularly who have cell phones, instead of, you know, it's, I realize that it's a symbol of, you know, of having an office or whatever, but, you know, and for those school classrooms that are maybe removed from the central office, that could be important. I think we need to take a look, and there needs to be a policy. But having an ornament on your desk, you know, in this day and age, we know that we have, when you have, the classroom is already connected to Internet, you can send it on email. Mr. Legace, I would guess that you could probably set something up through, you know, the computers that we've got on our, in the classroom, that if we need an emergency button of some sort, that we could, you know, hit the front office. There's all sorts of other ways, you don't have to have that telephone, which most of which are probably, they've got to be 15 years old by now. So, you know, that is money that we could save for VAPA, that's money that we could save for, you know, for gate and OSL. I disagree with the question regarding lobbying and communication. I've seen the lobbying efforts up in Sacramento pay off. I think we've saved several million dollars. I know that we're working on the class size reduction bill. It gives us a very credible voice up in Sacramento that we haven't had for a very long time, and it is, it's money, I believe it's well spent. Regarding communications department, I think, district relations office, I think that maybe we could do some trimming there. I noticed that they seem to be largely unscathed. I think that you could. But again, I think it is also important, one of the things that we don't do in San Diego very well is talk about where to go, where there is success, and where there is failure, and why. And I think the communication department has really tremendously increased the outreach within the district with their website. For the first time, I'm seeing parents are more engaged, they've got better information. Sometimes they don't like what they're reading, you know, sometimes, but they have the information. So, you know, I would, I'd take a look at the communications department again and see if there isn't someplace that we could trim it a little bit. But again, with lobbying, I deeply disagree. Regarding the board office and regarding travel and going to conferences, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, suspending those for a couple of years. You know, it is, I think, you know, travel by the Board of Education has its merit, and I think sometimes it can be helpful. I think it depends on what the circumstances are, what kind of a group you're leading, what type of an engagement. But if it's just for your own edification at this point, I think it's time that we all take a look, if it's only to pad your own resume. And then while I do deeply believe in professional development and growth, I think for the next couple of years, it's going to be a little tough. And I think we need to look at ourselves and look at what we're asking our students to give up before we continue that. Don't get me wrong, I do think it is important that we know trends and stay informed, but right now, we're making some really difficult decisions. Regarding the pay raise, or excuse me, pay cut, I have said before, and I'll say it again, I think it is unconscionable to ask for 8%, and I know that someone has said that I'm being inconsistent. I'm not being inconsistent. I think it's important to keep talent. I want smart people working on the problems within this district, and I think the quality of who is here, if we're going to have fewer people, we want to make sure that they're the right people. It is an obligation. So as far as an 8% decrease, I'd rather see, you know, if it has to be, 4%, 4%, or, you know, try and find something that works on all of our, that, from top to bottom, that is consistent. I mean, I think that when we do the pay raises, you know, we give them to the top just as much as we give them to the bottom, but people have built their lives on this. We are all educators, and some of these cuts mean that, as I have said before, means that our kid isn't going to go to college this year. And they simply, that's just simply not, I don't agree with it. I just don't think it's the, we need something, we need to make some reductions as far as salary is concerned, and I agree with the furloughs, which is pretty much the same thing. But I'd like to not hit our staff so terribly hard. The people who remain have to be able to do their work, and they have to have confidence in the ability to live the lives that they have worked hard for, that they've gotten, gone out. Every single person in this district, for the most part, you know, is well-educated, hard-working. They've taken a lot to be here, and I want to keep them. I don't think that we should, that they should be sacrificial lambs. I think that everyone here has worked hard and that they deserve to be paid for, compensated for that. They are already, many of them have sacrificed within their industries to be here, to be in education, and are not making nearly as much money. So I want to keep smart people in the district, because if we have fewer people, we need to have smart people working hard. So that's pretty much it. But again, classroom, I don't know how we can make it clear to you. I thought the last time when we did priority-based budgeting, that the board as a whole was pretty clear about keeping a broad curriculum and protecting programs that affect children. I think we're going to have to go back, or we're going to have to take a look at this again and really make some decisions, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Robb?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to say that I do appreciate all the work that the staff has put into this. I think they certainly are in a difficult role all the time. When we say, for the brace, you know, go out and just find anywhere to cut, because we need to cut, and they come back and we don't like it, and then we say, well, let's start with our priorities, tell us what our priorities are, and, not tell us what our priorities are, but try to make a budget based on these priorities, and of course, we don't end up satisfied, because none of us are satisfied. One of the things that we have tried to do is, you know, look at cuts that don't hurt kids. But one of the problems we're coming up with is we can't, we have certain priorities, and we can't even fund all of the basic priorities that we have mentioned, given the budget that we have. And I think there's a very general consensus on the board that direct services to kids come first and everything else comes second. But it's certainly not as simple as, you know, grownups versus kids and so forth, because we could take lots of examples that have been mentioned. If there is a lobbying effort that brings in a certain amount of money to help programs for kids, then obviously not having that hurts kids. So it's just not a really simple distinction. I think what's important is that what we're doing at this point is that the responsibility is on the board to really look at, okay, we see that 86 million up there, and we are, based on the 86 million, we're saying, okay, we have put certain proposals to our employees to make huge sacrifices that would reduce it some. We've looked at this priority-based budget, most of which we don't like, and that would do some, and even beyond that, there's still a bigger gap. I think it's important, though, that everyone be free, every member of the board be free to bring up ideas that are not necessarily, you know, concrete proposals at this point. I know at the last meeting, we had a lot of comments, for example, on the importance of arts and music, and it was interesting, because what the proposal put forth by the staff was a reduction of the VAPA department of 2%, which is a lot different than, you know, obliterating a program. I think we need a lot more information, and we've got some of that, and I think we need to get more, particularly in terms of on the priority-based budgeting, in terms of how this exactly works. One example would be with the gate department, because the idea was presented that we would still be testing all the kids, that we would still have all the gate seminar classes, and that we would still have some support from the central office. The staff is in quite a bind, because on the one hand, we say we want to decrease the number of people who are working at central office, we want less bureaucrats, use that word, and more direct service people, and then when we consolidate things there, and it affects certain departments, the idea that's put forth is that these kids aren't going to have these services. But we do want to have services for gate, we do want to have services for language acquisition for VAPA and everything else. What we need to, what we need to do is look at how can we consolidate in such a manner that really does preserve those programs, but actually has the support staff at the central office functioning more efficiently. There are a lot of ideas that I think we need to consider, because we still have a huge budget gap. And I think even with the gap, we know that the number changes due to ongoing information coming in about, we don't, we can't say for sure at this point what our ending balance will be. We were given a paper showing that in general, we're still operating on first interim statistics, and in general, the projection at the first interim is lower than, for what the ending balance will be, is lower than what it ends up being at the end. This is a pretty general trend. We saw that last year, that was not the case, but you also have to recall that last year, well after the first interim, there was a mid-year cut to the budget, which was pretty extreme, much more extreme than even the $8 million that's reflected there. So we have to make ideas and plans even not knowing the exact numbers. I think there are several different things that we need to consider. I think the whole consolidation of the school improvement, the curriculum and the other departments needs to be looked at carefully. If we don't take all of the priority-based budget cuts, then we are adding to the 25 million and making that going up even higher, so we have to figure out how to do that. I think everything that we want to save, we have to say to ourselves, what are we going to take away? Just one example of something that's a difficult decision, we decided to keep the student-teacher ratios the same, and one of the recommendations was to increase the teacher allocation for the K to 8, because they're in a difficult situation with their... they're in a difficult situation with their scheduling of teachers and subjects. But we have to look at whether we can fix this problem in the K-8s this year or whether we need to wait a couple of years. Another proposal is, we have some further information on, is as far as the consolidation of the small high schools within a large high school in terms of how that's handled administratively, in terms of having several principals at a school site. And I think that needs to be considered very carefully also. In terms of transportation, we've seen a lot of savings come through on transportation, but I still think there is one more that we can look at, which is, includes, which was mentioned, but in the original report, but not calculated, which was the possibility of doing what other districts in the area are doing and charging for transportation in certain circumstances, not for mandated services, not for families that are not able to afford it. One of the things we put in here was, which I asked to have included here, was the budget for the Board of Education because one of the things we do, we say, every department needs to look at itself and figure out how to cut even more, even though it's very difficult to do. So the Board of Education must not be an exception to that. I think when we're still millions and millions of dollars short, we may have to, rather than trying to figure out exactly how to cut in each department, we may need to tell every department, including the Central Office Departments, Board of Education, everything else, that we need to go back and find another 5% or something to come up with a few million more dollars. Another area we need to look at is in terms of the contribution of the General Fund to special education. And within that, there are the federal laws, obviously, about maintaining our effort. And when we're spending a certain amount of money on special education, we're supposed to maintain that. And I know there are a lot of intricacies of this that go beyond my understanding, but I think we need to really look at what the spirit of the law is, first of all, which is to maintain the special education services that we have. And if the number of students in special education is going down, and if it turns out that some of the personnel in special education are taking salary rollbacks or furloughs, that is actually decreasing, providing the same services to all the students, but decreasing the total special education budget. Anytime the special education budget is decreased, that decreases the contribution of the General Fund to special education. I know there are a lot of legal and technical, financial issues there, but I think that's a very important area to look at. One of the things we also heard in talking with the community was looking at our properties and some capital funds in terms of being able to use some of them in an emergency situation. At one, there was the Copley Fund that's been referred to. At one point, we were told we had the flexibility to use that. Another point, we've been told that that's not a legal possibility, but I think it is certainly something that the public wants us to look at if we have some flexibility in those funds. The other area that we need to look at, we have the 21 million from the priority-based budget. And again, I think if we're going to cut into that, we need to say, okay, what else are we going to add on to replace that because we're still short? But when we had the priority-based budget, we had several items that were below the line, that hadn't necessarily been subjected to the priority-based budget, which was the school site athletics allocation, school sites telecommunications. There was some confusion about the Gate teacher allocation, about whether that was properly calculated. Also, the overformula teacher figure, we weren't sure about that. And then on the magnet allocation, I'm not sure if that's the fund, the amount that's coming from the General Fund or if there are special funds that are covering the magnets. So I think there's an additional, quite a few million below the line on the priority-based budget that we need to kind of scrutinize in the same process. That's all I have for now.
Good. Well, I think, I don't know that I've got anything to add, actually, from what's been said, so I'll just maybe highlight a few things that I'd agree with, where we need to look. I think the, this question of the general ed contribution to special ed, we really need to analyze. We're currently projecting that at about $115 million. My understanding is that we've never gone much above $100 million. And in, you know, when we're in an effort to actually reduce the over-identification, you know, of special ed students, to bring more inclusion into the general ed classrooms, it seems like the idea that we would be increasing our General Fund contribution to special ed doesn't make a lot of sense logically. I, you know, my guess is that there's questions about the, you know, what actually are the legal mandates and how we interpret those that probably goes into that calculation. But that seems like a big leap of another $15 million or so from our General Fund into special ed contribution at a time when, you know, as Dr. Evans talked about, we're looking to, you know, potentially reduce the overall or make more efficient the overall delivery of services to special ed students. So that would be one that I would really want us to do some careful analysis of. I put on the table a couple of things that are very difficult, you know, for me to put on the table because they're ideas that I believe in very strongly. One is the, there's been a lot of conversation, and it's fair game, about at a time of, you know, real financial crisis, that we're making such an increased contribution to, you know, in technology, to our I-21 program. And in particular, I think, I think a lot of people understand that, you know, the installation of the whiteboards and, you know, the sort of the Promethean boards and a lot of that work is paid for out of our school bond. And so we're talking about restricted funds that are, you know, making those capital improvements. And so to stop doing that wouldn't help us with our unrestricted funds. But the question has come up, I think repeatedly, yeah, but what about all of the other expenses that are associated with our, you know, ramping up our I-21 program, including professional development, you know, for teachers and maybe ongoing maintenance and other things? And so I've asked, you know, the staff to come back and do an analysis of if we were to simply suspend for a couple of years the rollout of our I-21 program, what savings would we see in the General Fund unrestricted? And I believe that the analysis is going to be not much, if any, because even the professional development and other expenses are also paid for through restricted funds. But I think that's important analysis, you know, for us to have back. Another area that's, you know, very difficult for me to, you know, put on the table for analysis is the consolidation of small high schools. San Diego High School, Crawford High School, Kearney Complex. I believe in small high schools. I believe that, I don't, you know, as a lot of research has shown that small high schools on their own are not an answer to improving, to improving, you know, the high school experience for students, but I believe it can be an important part of the answer. And we do certainly have small high schools in this district that have shown, you know, tremendous, you know, improvement for those students. But we also have small high schools, including small high schools in San Diego High, the area that I represent, where we have not seen a lot of improvement for students in the time that the small schools have been in existence. And because we're in a situation where we've got to be, you know, every choice that we have is a painful choice, I think we've got to be looking at that. Are there things that we can do right now in those complexes where we've converted large high schools to small high schools, where we can potentially save some money and do a better job for our students? And I think we've got to, we've got to put those questions on the table, as difficult as that analysis is, you know, will be for those school communities. I think I, you know, I hear maybe a little bit of a consensus emerging and maybe not the way that I'll frame it, but in terms of, the way I tend to think about the support that schools need, so I think there's clear consensus on the Board that we want to protect funding for our schools. I think Ms. Jackson raises a question that I've had for some time, which is, what is the level of support from outside of a school budget that charter schools receive? So charter schools in general don't have school improvement officers. Charter schools don't have curriculum and instruction departments. Charter schools don't have a lot of things that schools in our district, you know, have in terms of, in terms of support from the Central Office. So I guess the question that I would, the way that I would frame this question is, can we, can our schools in the district, you know, thrive at the same level of Central Office support in a sense that charter schools receive? And I know charter schools have mixed results, so do our district schools. But if charter schools can get by without the levels of Central Office support that we have in our district schools, why can't our district schools and what would that look like if we were to, you know, basically give the same, you could call it freedom and, or you could call it lack of support to our district schools that charter schools receive? I guess that's the way that I would frame this conversation of Central Office support for, reducing Central Office support in order to preserve funding at the school level. And the only other one that I would highlight that I, I also, you know, just threw out as a broad challenge to all of our Central Office Departments, can we go deeper than what we identified in the priority-based budget recommendations? So what I threw out is, can we look at another 5% reduction across the board in our Central Office Departments? My guess is the answer to that is, depends on which department, that some departments really might be, you know, have been stretched beyond their limit, but maybe other departments, you know, need to be subject to a little bit more analysis. And the last one is the point that Mr. DeBeck brought up last Tuesday, which is, if we're making salary reductions, which, you know, furlough days do, are we making them in a way that's fair? So is, you know, somebody that's really struggling to get by and make ends meet getting hit at the same level as, you know, people at the top of the pay scale in the district? And so what I put on the table for analysis is, if we exempt from salary reductions, say, people making less than $30,000 a year on an FTE basis, but then subject people making more than $125,000 a year to a 15% salary cut, and these are just, you know, numbers that I'm putting out there for the sake of, you know, of taking a look at, what would that look like, you know, in terms of?
Couldn't be a wash.
So let's take a look at that. But if we're going to talk about a concept of, you know, of fairness, then I think we have to, you know, we have to throw some numbers out. And if the answer is it's a wash, or if the answer is it costs the district more money to do something like that, then maybe we need to throw different numbers out there to look at. And in terms of, I do, you know, the priority-based budget, I think, did a very good job of preserving a couple of key priorities, you know, that I identified, you know, for the district or that I think as a Board. Priority-based budget maintains class size. The priority-based budget also maintains VAPA. I mean, I think there was a lot of conversation last week from advocates for VAPA. I think there were five advocates for VAPA on the Board. I don't see that the priority-based budget in any way threatens VAPA. I think it preserves VAPA. The...
Subsumed in another part?
No, it does not. It does not.
Go ahead, Mr. Stover.
The VAPA, the VAPA program would, under our proposal, would be reduced by one resource teacher out of the 30 that exist. The program in its entirety, except for that one teacher, would be then subsumed under a new department that would coordinate all of the programs across the Board of that nature. So it is, the VAPA structure is intact. The lead VAPA person would report to an executive director now in the new world, but there would be a reduction of one FTE.
Yeah, but it's going to report to Career Technical Education, correct?
No.
No?
Of course, report to IS, a new instructional support service.
The VAPA Director currently reports to somebody. Now the VAPA Director would report to somebody else, but the VAPA program stays intact.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, no, no.
Except for one person.
Except for one out of 30 people, right. So the, the Gate, I know that there's been, I know that there's been discussion with the Gate community, actually, since last Tuesday. And I see in the revised priority-based budget recommendations, and I won't ask this question now because we'll get into it, but I guess what I'm not understanding in the revised recommendations is, are there any cost savings associated with the, you know, with the recommendations regarding Gates? So we'll get into that conversation. And in terms of OSIL, OSIL's a program I believe deeply in. You know, as I've said, the first time that I was in the mountains in my life was at sixth grade camp. And I know that there are a lot of people in our community that that's true, and there are a lot of people in our community that the last time, they're going to, you know, be able to, you know, take advantage of, you know, Palomar or Old Town or, you know, Balboa Park to a certain extent is through the OSIL program. I think it's a critical part of the school experience, you know, for our students that sticks with people for their entire lives. And that is maybe, you know, unique to San Diego, but I think it's a special part of, you know, what we have in San Diego. What I would like to see is an analysis of OSIL that, you know, are there areas that we can reduce, you know, for the next couple of years? In other words, is OSIL dependent? In order to have a strong OSIL program, do we have to do it at the same level of funding that we're currently doing it? I think that's a conversation that I know people from, involved in the OSIL programs are, already began with the district as part of the BRACE conversation and are willing to have more of. I also think the OSIL program is something that our district needs to be calling on our community. You know, we've got tremendous advocates in this community for Balboa Park, for Old Town, and certainly for, you know, Camp Palomar and the notion of environmental education. We, as a district, are going to need to reach out to you and ask you to help us. Help us fund these programs, you know, for the next couple of years while we're in this crisis. And I believe that we need to do that, which is part of the reason why I also believe that having a strong community outreach capacity in our district is important, along with, you know, the, I do believe that there are tangible benefits to our district from our lobbying effort in Sacramento. Although the idea of, you know, cutting board travel, I'm more than fine with. There's a upcoming conference in Washington DC that I think some of us are going to go to. I'm doing it on frequent flyer miles and I'm going to stay with people that I know when I'm there. So I, you know, I don't have a problem with us looking at cutting back travel and conference memberships and that kind of thing. But, but yeah, I think, I think overall, the, taking a closer look at the special ed contribution, doing this analysis of small high schools within a larger high school, probing deeper, can we get another 5% out of these, some of these Central Office Departments is what I would, is what I would highlight right now. Okay, so yeah, do we want to do a next round?
Well, I'll be as quick as I can. On the last item about the schools being supported by charity versus taxes, I'm not in favor of going to a community and begging for support for programs when the community hasn't shown, and that question would be, hasn't shown support for increasing taxes like parcel taxes to cover programs. Public education is public education, isn't private donations that should fund it. You know, how many cookie sales do you need to run a school district? I don't believe in that. So I'm going to say that, you know, I don't want to go out, I love people to support our schools. If they want to donate money to the General Fund, let them do it. If they want to tie strings to their donations, as some do, that's okay too. But I'm not, I'm not in the business or in the, I didn't get elected, to go out begging to the community for private donations to support the general obligations of school districts. So that's, you know, if... So that's, you know, if it, if it's not being supported by the state in general, in general support for, for the kids in ADA, and we're sitting on top of a, of a resistance to local taxes to support the programs we have, then we're going to have to cut. Now, as the, as the wanting to study things, we run out of time. You know, sometime between now, which is the 15th or so, and probably the end of this month, we have to make a decision period, or we'll just back ourselves into the corner. So we don't have time for all these studies. That's why I believe the only solution is a general salary decrease, so should money come forward, that we can reverse it. Instead of that, some folks are pointing this way or this way to say, let's cut things that aren't need. And I don't think that we can do that unless we have had a systematic evaluation of the things. That's our biggest weakness. We don't know what the contributions of half these things are. And I've read the rebuttals to, you know, why we need to lobby and why we need to do all this stuff. If we were effective in lobbying, we wouldn't be in the position we're in right now. And to continue to beg the feds and the state for support begs the issue. It's a general economic decline in the country. The state is fighting hard to survive. They're not coming out to help us. The feds are not coming out to help us. We're on our own. So then the question is, is it, you know, I read all these things, rebuttals to all the statements that I might have raised, like, you know, who wants to do anything like some of the questions I asked? But the point is, the options disappear. And if they're all illegal, and they're all impossible, then our solution's already made for us. And, you know, I mean, when I read that you can't do this and you can't do that, and when I read recommendations of shifting GATE psychologists to special ed, and there's no difference in the, there's no difference in the cost, then all you're doing is shifting the cost to add to the encroachment. You're basically not doing anything to help yourself. So, you know, and if, all these things were valid, successful ideas for savings, we should have incorporated them a long time ago when we weren't under stress. Okay, now, I can remember a year ago when I was talking about this budget, one of the things I put on the table with furloughs. Now, all of a sudden, furloughs make sense, but they're not enough. If we'd had furloughs last year, we'd have had that savings rolled over double. We don't. You know, and if we'd saved 15 million last year, we'd have had 30 million together of the two years. We're basically now facing a time when we've got probably less than 15 days to make a decision, and we're doing, we're going to be doing it by the seat of our pants, not by evaluation, not by a yardstick that measures how many kids are actually in contact with the people, but how we feel about whether or not we go to Sacramento and beg again. I'm going to go there. We're, we're against it. I still stick with the idea that our membership, our travel, and our public information, and our lobbying, and our central office line, line authority over principals needs to go. And so does our staff development, and so does our, and so does our curriculum development. We don't have, we can't afford those luxuries. They, they are essential parts of education, except when you don't have the money. And we don't. So we can, we can sidestep all this stuff, you know? GATE and OCIL were centrally funded for a reason. That's to support the schools economically to do the stuff. If you want to push it back out, it's very much like pushing out special ed. So don't have any centralized support for kids, you know, no deaf program in a, in a high school, just to have all the deaf programs throughout the high schools. It costs you more money to do it. So the reason we centralized services within special ed, or centralized services within general ed, or special, or we take the mega item that they gave us years ago and started cutting off our fingers so we could save money, we basically have already done those things about cutting programs, and now we're sitting here and we're saying, oh yeah, but the people who walk around and talk to people about giving us money should stay while the kids' program should go? Uh-uh. I'm not there. So I may be the one sole vote that says, you know what? Don't do it. We're not going to spend the money on central services. We can't. And if that's not enough, then let's cut the personnel costs, which is, everybody takes a hit. If you want to graduate it, so be it. I don't care, but I think we need to find the money, and fast. And not, you know, dance around the head of a pin trying to find little pieces of, you know, stuff. It's not there. I mean, if we did away with all the cell phones with that balance of our budget, heck, absolutely not. Would we do away with all the phone service to schools? Absolutely not. So we, we are basically facing a big hunk of money. And if you've got a better answer, go for it.
First, let me go through your document that you gave us with answers on it, because it's going to take something from everywhere in order to meet this deficit. It's not going to be a one-shot thing that's going to make it work. So I'm, I'm starting here at, I guess it's page one of your responses in this board printout. And it says, the ballot center, the funds to be given to the schools, that's about, I think we have about 83 Title I schools, about $7,000. The question that I, I bring this up is because the concern that I have is the legal requirement under Title I. What happens if the, if school gets $7,000, and that's not enough for them to do what they need to do as far as the requirements by the law? If that's how it's allocated, I'm not quite sure if it's allocated by students, or it gets divided equally among the schools? And that, you know, I, I think that needs to be known. Then I go down to really the, the next page, which is the, the chief improvement officers and improvement officers. Well, and the first one is here, the consolidation of the small schools. And I do agree with Mr. Barrera that it can be combined. Looking at the document that was provided in the back of the packet, it looks like this has already, has been reviewed. What people have to understand is that initially during the small schools movement, there were a lot of GATE's funding attached, attached to that. That funding went away at the end of November, and while some schools are doing great, some schools are not. We're not saying that the things for those schools have to go away. The, the schools can still maintain those learning communities as they have. What we're doing is looking at how the executive leadership at that school is shaped. So if you look, if you look at all of them, and Crawford has a savings of $371,000, Kearney is $175,000, Lincoln is $502,000, and San Diego Complex is $385,000. Now, I understand, and I think it's written here in bold someplace too, that it is going to be the problem of the leadership. How do you select one principal out of a, a community when you have four or five good, qualified people? And what happens to the other people, which is why this has been such a controversial thing? The focus right now has to be on students. It really, really has to be on students. And if that's going to save us $1 million by having these schools to be small learning communities versus four individual cost centers with four individual principals, then that is an easy solution for me. So I put okay beside all of those. When it comes down to, I think, risk management, classified HR, and it says risk management only has six employees, the, the question is whether or not this can be combined with legal or HR. There's a number of items in here, but the things that say people are uniquely, this is very uniquely the issue. And my concern is that, and Mr. DeBecque said it right, you know, correctly, during a time of economic crisis, we don't have the luxury of having uniquely identified areas. All areas have to work together. I, I always mention, you know, try to consolidate, and I think you've done some good work around consolidation, but we're just going to have to do a little bit more. And, and the bottom line is that, that in order for us to meet this economic crisis, we will have to trim around the edges, which means we will be losing some people, but it shouldn't be the people that are touching the kids. And that's hard, because sometimes, you know, those people are maybe, you know, listening upstairs or sitting here in the audience today, and I'm sorry for that. When it goes over to, I'm moving over to page number four now, excuse me, where it says deputy superintendent. One of my items, previously I asked about the, the special assistant to the superintendent, and that was fine when we have money. We don't have money. So the deputy superintendent's office here, where you have option number C, where you're reducing these people, which will save about another $1 million, that's, that's workable. I think what we're doing again is we're giving more emphasis to the actual principals at the site. Now, I understand that in times past, that the principals have been talked to about what happens if the central office support is not there? What does that look like? To me, that is a critical thing for right now, a critical issue. A critical issue would be, you know, the, I think that everyone is hearing, majority of the boards say, that our focus is on the schools and our classroom. Then the conversation now needs to be with the principals to say, okay, if you do not have support coming from central office, how, you know, what is it that you really, really, really need to have from the central office? Number one, okay, that you just absolutely cannot live without, and whatever that is identified as, how do we make that work? And then number two, and as Richard and I mentioned earlier, many of our charter school partners, they don't have the same requirements. We, I understand that, but, but the question is, how do we help our principals, number one, know what their budget is? And this is the problem that I think many of the principals are concerned about. They do not know what their budget is. They have to call up to the central office to find out, can I spend this money? Then the central office will tell them in a couple of days, yes, they can, or maybe they can't, and then they say, well, but according to, you know, this section, I can use it. And then they say, well, okay, you can use it. Or they find out later that they can't use it. It causes this big ball of confusion. What I don't understand as a, as a board member, I think Catherine had said it earlier, is that all we need, the schools need to know how much money they have. Any principal, and even as they're given a clear understanding, how much money? So if I was to ask, you know, Mr. Stover, or Amy, how, how much, how much money does one school generate? What is a school X budget? How much do they get per ADA? How much do they get per Title I? How much do they get per Impact Aid? How much do they get for second language learners? I mean, the whole list. Could, could you tell a principal that? And then, could you give the principal that budget? Now, I know our budget book will have something in there, and usually that amount includes something that's coming from the central office. But I believe that, that given what we have as far as technology, that we can say to a school site, here is your budget. Your budget is 1.5 million, or maybe it's 10 million, or whatever it is. Here is your budget for the year. Now, can we run this school on this budget? This is the funds that are generated by your student population for this school. Can we run the school on this amount? If the answer is no, I mean, the community, which is why we have state codes that involve the school site councils, if the community is aware of this, then the community has to make a decision about their schools. The other thing that happens here is that we're deciding all of this about schools, and we're not engaging the people that it affects mostly, which is the community that is sitting in. So, for example, if a school budget is $10 million, and the school says, you know what? We cannot, to the community, the funds that we generate for our school is 10 million. Our school cannot function on 10 million. And the question becomes whether or not that school is able to function in that community. We haven't talked about school closure. It's in here for one, for a couple of items, and, and again, legal, I think legal is saying, well, we have a protocol. But I know that we also, in time of emergency, can do emergency items, which may, may mean having to look at schools and close schools if we have to. What we do now is we say, okay, school X over here needs to have an additional, you know, $5 million, and we shift it from wherever to make sure that school has it. And while I am, people hear me say, I do believe in schools and the community, but right now, I think we have to look at, what is a school entitled to? And then the principals and the community decide whether or not they can make the school function with the funds that they're entitled to. And I think that's one of the advantages that maybe our charter peers have over us. Let me speed up, I'm sorry here. On page six, the district relations, I think the government relations person should be in the board office. Whether we like it or not, on the state and federal level, it is about lobbying. You cannot be silent. If you're silent, you do get left. Now, right now, the economic crisis is because of a general state not having funds. But, believe me, if we're not there pounding on the pavement, asking questions, trying to advocate for education, education is going to get cut. And, and I know last year, we rallied the call, and people called and sent emails, and that's why we didn't take as deep a cut as we possibly had been planned for. But it is because when people, voices are heard, people respond. Just like up here on the board, sometimes people will say, I'm going to do one thing, but when the people come down and advocate, they change their mind. And so lobbying is essential. Now, whether or not the, the board members go to these places, I, I know, because I probably wanted to go the most, yes, I think it is important that we go. I don't need to pad a resume, because I don't need a resume for anything in particular when it comes to doing my board responsibilities. But I do believe that it is important that, being the second largest district in this state, and one of the largest districts in the nation, that our voices are heard. And people are always wanting to know what San Diego is thinking, what San Diego is doing. And we can't always just say, well, just wait till we go to the council and let other districts and superintendents tell us what, what is going on. We need to be leaders. And leaders mean that sometimes you look at things differently, and then you, you bring forth ideas and see what people say about them. So I think the Governmental Affairs Relations Office should be part of, actually, the board's office, because the trips and the conversation needs to be more intense. And I applaud them for what they have been doing so far, and we have sponsored legislation so, and got some things done because we are so large. And we do get appointments. One of the issues that came up before was that when we go to DC and Sacramento, as mentioned in your report, we can get appointments that other people can't get. We get them because we are so large. We have an advantage of that in the past. We've kind of, just kind of like wanted to stay back. And I really, really believe that we have to be leaders and push items forward, and not just wait for our organization to be part of it. I'm moving on to page 15 now, JROTC. I said, just do it. It's only, people say, well, it's only 50%. And I go back to my comment about schools. When a school calls up and says, oh, this program is only $20,000 that you need to give to me for this program, I say, multiply that times 200 school sites, okay? Every little bit right now in this particular deficit helps. And, and we have models here in our own county where there's lots of other schools that don't even have a, a central office person at all. Strategic outsourcing office on page 16, I said, the cost centers, and this is, this is an item that goes throughout the entire budget, where the executive staff and their cost centers are separate. And this is, this is very confusing. Why? Because most of the time, when someone looks at a department, and North Face HR, if I look at HR's budget, I think that's the entire HR's budget. It is confusing when I find out later that that was only part of it, because the executive leadership team has another cost center altogether. And so I think that we can maybe simplify things by whatever budget it is. If it's the board office budget, then all of the board office stuff is in there together. It's not code 500, 501, 503, 502, unless there's a specific reason that that would help us, you know, in, in the big scheme of things. But right now, I think that sometimes you have But right now, I think that sometimes you have all these departments, and so the board thinks that we're trimming one department. In actuality, we have not touched some executive staff or leadership, because that wasn't even in the budget. So I think that, that part, um, is, um, important as well. We had some cost-saving measures that was brought to the staff, um, some auditing of our medical records, I, I think it was, or our, um, uh, medical, and, uh, some e-procurement office, uh, options that would save us quite a bit of money. Um, and even, I think there was a question about how they could help us make money. And, uh, I think that those things have not been, uh, brought back or addressed as far as the overall budget, as potential savings. And, and I think that would be good for us to know, too. Of those items, I know the staff is working on some of them and gonna implement some of them, but the question is, what is the potential savings? You know, and it may be that we have projected, you know, 5 million, but whatever that is, I think it'd be important for us to know as far as when we're looking at trying to fill this, um, this, this, this entire, this entire gap. And I hear, and I, we all understand that our backs are up against the wall, uh, we have to have this budget done, um, and probably by the end of the month, we have to make some very, very, uh, tough decisions. And I don't think there's anyone sitting up here that wouldn't mind making tough decisions. The question is, will we make the right tough decisions? So we don't mind making the tough decisions. And I say that because sometimes staff will say, well, gosh, if we, if we tell them this, you know, they may not like it, or it's gonna be really, really hard. Our point is this, we don't mind, as long as it's the right thing. The only worst thing than making a tough decision is making the wrong tough decision. And so our goal is to make the right one, which is keeping us in our primary business,[724.11]
...within this district because it's not just about the actual paper that we print out in this district, but transporting it, the transportation. You know, I don't actually need to have paper delivered to my home, to be honest with you. As a board member, I can come in my own car and I can go pick it up. I know that there are, or, you know, cutting back on those schedules if there's something that you absolutely have to have, you know, delivered. But, you know, I would expect that Mr. Legasse has lots of ideas about what a paperless school district would look like. I mean, it's unbelievable, the amount of paper and the transportation of sending this stuff crisscrossing every day across the district. If we could develop a policy that would severely curtail that, you know, it would be, I think, that would be a step in the right direction. It would save, it's good for the environment, you know, the gas, the fumes that comes from these cars, it'd be the paper that saved the trees, you know, that's another area that I'd like to look at.
It's obsolete when you get it.
The, uh, no, not necessarily. You know, I think if you do it...
Mine is.
Well, if you, it is obsolete when you get it. By the time you get it, it's obsolete anyway. That is, I get your point, Mr. DeBeck. So, Ms. Jackson was talking about letting principals have their own budgets. This is getting back to the concept of Making Schools Work, a book that, you know, if I had more cash, I'd go out and buy a copy for every board member. We are implementing proxyent. Where is Mr. Macias today, by the way? I don't see our financial, our chief financial officer.
He has a medical emergency today.
But we are implementing proxyent, which is going to give principals the opportunity, this is something, this is one of my sad, I've been reduced to fantasies like this, but this is one of the things that I've dreamed of for a long time, once I found out what not only principals have to work with, but department heads have to work with. When, Ms. Chuggford, when are we going to be having the proxyent? I know that it's, all of you are doing a lot of things all at once, and it's very demanding, but this could, in fact, help us a lot.
Yeah, we're trying to get, finish the data uploads into the tool in the next couple of weeks. They have finished the initial programming, which has integrated the school site plans and the financial data into one tool. So now it's just a matter of getting all of our position data, last year's financial history, and all the revenue and the allocations, all of that loaded into the tool.
At one fixed point in time and...
Yeah.
Move forward. Okay. I think that, that will help tremendously if we can, if we can get that up. I know that our principals are dying for their workbooks. They can't believe that they haven't got their workbooks yet for making the year. I don't agree with moving the Government Relations Office, just for the record, into the Board Office. I think it ought to, we have a superb District Relations Officer who's made a tremendous amount of difference, and I prefer going through him. And, you know, he's, if we get appointments frequently, it's because of him as much as it is our Government Relations Person. Layoffs, we're going to be having to look at layoffs and discussing that. Salary reductions, we're going to have to look at that. And I think some of these schools are going to have to be closed, you know, and looking through, I've got a question also about our chief special projects position. I know that that's currently filled, but that was a significant amount of money that I think we can look at. I agree with Mr. Barrera's comments about 115 million for special education students. When I started on the Board, that number was 60 million. I remember very distinctly. And it was, it's now 115 million, and we talk about healthcare and the escalation of healthcare. I think this far outstrips that. So if we've done, I agree, it's counterintuitive, Mr. Barrera, that if we have looked at, you know, the main, amazing, we're mainstreaming, and we put all of those efforts in, is in order to have a cost savings, and yet here it has so dramatically increased. I'm actually speechless. So it's, I think we do need to take a look at that again regarding deputy superintendent. I, you know, I think sometimes we really misunderstand the scale within this school district. I mean, it is as though, you know, if you took, we say we have 200 schools. I mean, I know it depends on how you count them, 206, 180, I mean, it depends on how you count them, but let's just for round numbers, say 200. If you just take 200 popsicle sticks and lay them out in front of you, and imagine the superintendent having to manage every single one of those individuals, just put a little face, you know, on the popsicle stick, and imagine that's a principal. One superintendent can't do that. And these are human beings, and they need the support from, you know, the central office. I agree with Ms. Jackson, we need to find out what would be the most helpful type of support, but I do know that also someone's stopping in, you know, as an SIO, and we have had, you know, SIOs in this district since the beginning of time, I believe. I've gone back, I remember the first time we went through this on the Board of Education. You know, I actually went back and looked at the district, and we have always had about seven of them, sometimes five, but usually seven. You know, just 200 popsicle sticks, and then asking one superintendent to manage all of that, that can't be done. He needs to have, you know, second level managers to help out with that. So I'm not saying that it has to be with all the little bells and whistles. I think that we've got a number of people who are indeed, that department has already been stripped, you know, pretty significantly, but I'm in favor of, of giving that support to the superintendent. So particularly, so we have an atypical superintendent at the current time, who is not an educator himself. But even, even so, nobody's god, you know, I mean, a superintendent has to be able to, to do that. So given all of these recommendations, you know, I'd like to see an analysis of, you know, at some point, everything that we've said, how are you guys going to handle this? Are we gonna, you guys are gonna, you know, we're gonna de-convene, and then you're gonna go do work some magic and run the numbers and tell us what all of the things that we've said mean, and what's our whole again? I mean, where are we with even these recommendations? Because we are running out of time, and it's, March 15th is marching on us. Where are the Ides of March is true in this particular instance. So I think, how are you going to handle this?
We should direct that to the President.
Mr. Barrera?
I'm just saying.
Well, I'd like to ask the superintendent, because he's going to direct staff.
My question too, I wanted Dr. Evans to get his last comments in, and then that was mine, that was exactly...
You were gonna, you were gonna pursue that?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm, yeah, we are at 10:30. I don't know if we've added much value, but...
Okay, all right, and that's, I was just commenting, because that's kind of the point I was getting to, as far as what our next steps are going to be. But I think one of the things, obviously, we're looking at the, you know, we have the priority-based budget numbers, and we're looking at those, and we don't like some of those, but if we take some of those off, we have to bring some more onto the plate.
Absolutely.
There's, I think, a very general consensus about the need to protect direct services to children and the money at the school site. Even within that, I don't think anything should be, you know, 100% sacred. I just wasn't quite clear when I looked at some of the school site allocations, and they, I did mention about the fact of increasing the number of teachers in the K8 schools, but there were mentions in there about vice principals, the number there are, and then the number that are needed, the same with nursing and counselors and so forth. And I fully understand, appreciate the fact that we're way under on what we need, but we also have to look at, can we improve, when we've been operating at a certain level, can, in the middle of a big crisis, can we actually increase those numbers? And I'm not even, I'm not even clear if that was the case, so I think that's one of the things that will get clarified when we hear from the staff. I think there's, now, I'm just hearing a lot too, in terms of what the central office role and support, and I think the two parts, and this is what the priority-based budget people have been trying to look at, is number, the two things are, one, like if you were to ask principals and school site people, what do you need in terms of help from a central office? And then the other is, thing that the principals and others might not care about, is what is legally required. I mean, that's not their, their problem in terms of what the district is required to do, but those are the, kind of, the two angles to go about that. And I think that there's a lot for us to look at here, because we have charged the staff with looking at consolidation rather than elimination, and if there are certain departments, such as VAPA or any others, that there may be a little bit different line in terms of who they're reporting to, but we are not doing away with those services, and we're not doing away with someone watching over them and making sure that they continue. I think the example Ms. Jackson gave in terms of the charters is a good place to start. Obviously, there are some differences in terms of what we have to do as a district versus a charter, but, but still, there's this concept of what can, what are schools able to do on their own? And the whole point that the central office is there, which is a philosophical point, I think we've been making anyway, before the budget crisis, is having central office as a support that facilitates rather than, than directing and dictating. So, which is one of the reasons I mentioned, is my earlier item, I don't like the term "school improvement officer," because it kind of implies an inspector coming in and making sure you're doing what the district wants to do, as opposed to someone who's really supporting and backing them up and providing them with the help and the resources that they need to run their school, which I know is the intent. So I think, there's a lot of things that we don't like. I think in the, some of the suggestions that I made came up to about $4 million, which had to do with the consolidation of small schools, further consolidation of the school improvement, the transportation charging issue, and not increasing the teacher allocation, but, but moving them around. And then maybe, this is maybe a pipe dream, of looking for a few million dollars by further trimming department budgets. And, you know, we were going about this different ways, and one way to look at it is what's absolutely needed, and what does it cost to do it? But the other is, if you have only $3 in your wallet, what are you going to do with it? And so if instead of $3, you have $2.80, you know, looking at each department, what would you, what would you do in your department with $2.80 rather than $3? Which is just another way to, to look at making some really, really difficult decisions. I think, and just to kind of comment what Ms. Nakamura was saying, and what Mr. Barrera's going to lead on anyway, is this issue of, I think what we need to do, what I would like to see today, is to get some clarification from the staff of a lot of the things we said. Not, not that they can go back and run all the numbers and say everything, but they, I know, I brought up questions that, you know, were included in the notebook that you gave us, so, and that, that happens a lot. But I think we can get kind of a high view of, this is how it works, whether it has to do with school closures, telephones, charging for transportation, any of these, these different types of things, just kind of a ballpark idea, because I think we need to, we need to make some decisions and come up with some general direction based on some general information, and have that refined, rather than let's just get some information, and now the staff go out and do it. The Board has to really say, okay, we're really willing to look at cutting a million here, we're willing to look at doing away with this, we're willing to consolidate this. We know you can't, the staff can't sit here and say, this is exactly what it comes out to, but I don't think we can just say a lot of different ideas and go out and work on it. Because I think with, with our timeframe, we basically have to come up with some general structure today, and then give it to the staff, maybe to refine within the next few days, and meet within a few days to kind of work at finalizing this a little bit more, because we have to simultaneously work with our employee groups, work with the staff, and, and come up with some decisions within, pretty much, within the next two weeks.
Yeah, so I agree. So I think where we're at now is, unless board members have other ideas right now that haven't been discussed, that you want to put on the table, so let me ask that question first.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got this sheet, this unrestricted ending balance, I guess this is for Amy. And it shows an ending balance actual for 2008 and '09 of $44,877,000. But the beginning balance that shows for 2009 and '10, which would be the next year, is a $54 million item, which I'm assuming the difference is restricted funds.
This is just the general fund unrestricted piece?
So I don't know what this does for me.
This was...
I requested it, and I just wanted to know, just have some information on the history of when a first interim projection is made, which is what we're currently operating on first interim information, when a, when a projection is made, how does that compare to how it actually ended up? And I understand every year is different, every circumstance, yes, every circumstance is different, but it was just to see the pattern there.
Okay, all right. So then, but then the difference is in the vicinity of 18 million? And that then is restricted fund balance?
Reserves.
Yeah, but it's a restricted fund balance reserve? I don't know, you see, in other words, this, this is the general fund unrestricted, so then the number at the beginning balance that you have on this page dated February 16th has a $54,286,000 beginning balance for the '29 and '10. Okay? And the ending balance for each year usually rolls up to the next year. Okay, so then, but the ending balance that shows on this unrestricted ending balance sheet has the difference between that and the $54 million, which is around, around figures, is 10 million, I mean, 20 million bucks, looks like, no, 10 million, excuse me. So, you know, I guess if we're talking about our ending balance projections, we have to have ending balance projections for general fund and restricted, or else we can't use the numbers at all.
Yes, this is just a snapshot to show how that it can fluctuate between first interim, second interim, and...
And the pattern is that the ending balance is always higher than the estimates, by some considerable sum, and apparently...
In '08, '09...
Except for this year.
Yeah, in '08, '09, that was the, the governor's, may revise, where they gave us money back in '08, and then they took it away in '09, '10 with that $250 ADA, so that's why...
So the history is that we have usually more reserves than we believe, except this year we don't. Isn't that a fair statement?
I think, two observations, John. One, this was put together at Tristi Evans' request about half an hour before we began the session, and it was only looking at the unrestricted general fund. The purpose was to show a comparison between the first and second interims and the actual for the general fund unrestricted. I think is a general theme in most stable funding years, or where there are not major changes that may revise, the ending balance tends to be a little bit higher than projected at first interim or second. I think, though, if you go back in time to our last set of series of crises, the '03, '04, you'll find that pattern where the ending balances do drop, not go up, despite projections earlier. It's a matter of cycles and how your funding is available, and whether there are major changes that may revise. More often than not, it may revise. It's a positive, it's an improving trend.
But you're looking at it another way. Basically, as far as a reliability factor for the, for the Board, of the money, of the estimates of money that we have, it appears that in the past, we've had more than we thought we did, and in the present, we don't. And so to use the, the rules of the past to look at the present is probably a big mistake.
Like, yeah, I mean, it's...
It can be problematic.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, if you're looking at this from some point of view of conservatism, you're basically saying, in the past, we could kind of rely that the district was sending us figures that were padded. Currently, they're not.
Yeah, I mean, part of the...
Okay?
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I'm not sure how you...
There's a margin of error, but there certainly is a margin of error that is narrowing.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how you make that judgment about the current year. I mean, we don't know what our ending balance is going to be.
Well, we'll find that out, but I mean, then if the issue is that it's, it's still padded, then, then it's padded on the downside, that's not a good idea either, you see?
Yeah, so I think that the, so the question is, if we've sort of thrown at you, if we've done our, you know, idea dump, and, and...
They didn't look overwhelmingly impressed.
Well, you know, so I think that, I think what we need now, as a Board, is we need to have, similar to what we had last year, we need to have spreadsheets with, you know, here are line by line by line, all of the ideas that have been thrown out in the priority-based budget, here's all the ideas that the Board has thrown out, and here's our, you know, best analysis as a staff about what those costs or savings would be. And don't, you know, I guess the, the request would be, when you, when you bring that back to us, you really have had to, I know it's, we're working in time crunch here, but you really, you know, so, so don't put something on the spreadsheet, in other words, that you say, "But we can't do that." Then don't put it in front of us, you know, kind of...
Are we settling our budget for this year, I mean, the coming year today?
No. What I'm saying is that what we need to do, in your point about, you know, that we're under a time crunch, we need to come back fairly soon and start to vote on things, start to go through one by one by one.
When's that?
Do we have three votes? Well, that's the question. The question, you know, for the staff is, when can you take these ideas that are being, you know, put out to you, and bring them back to us in a form that allows us to make decisions? So I guess that's, that would be a question for you, Mr. Kobo.
But is there some things that aren't out there that still need to be on the table for decision-making?
And put them on the table. That's what we're doing right now.
Okay, what about the, the proposal that, you know, of the pay reductions across the Board, and the staggering of them, neither, none of those are on this, on this list that I see?
So in this analysis that comes back, just like last year, what we need are a list of items that are negotiable, and we need a list of items that are non-negotiable. So, so we can then go through and make decisions on things that we have the ability to make decisions on, and then be clear, what are those issues that need, need to be negotiated?
Well, I guess basically, we have the ability to make decisions on all of them, whether negotiable or not.
Oh, no, I disagree with that, but, but that's...
Well, I mean, that's why you have negotiations, isn't it?
Yeah, negotiations requires agreement from the other side.
No, they don't. There is a process for negotiations that, in this district, at least in my lifetime, has resulted in an impasse twice, maybe three times, in which there had to be some decisions made, and those decisions were made by the Board. And so to say the Board doesn't have any decision-making power is not correct.
We need to identify the areas that are negotiable, and identify the areas that are non-negotiable, come back to us, and, and be able to make decisions on those. So, Mr. Kobo, what's your sense of what the staff needs to do in order to bring that back to us?
I think, President Barrera, we probably need a little bit more conversation before the end of the day. I was right in line where Tristi Evans was going, is, you know, we've got a, we've got this range of observations we've heard, lots of good stuff. Now, where do you want us to go off to? I had a few comments I wanted to make, because I've been trying to take notes, as you've all been sharing your ideas. But I would think that, you know, we'll break here at 11 o'clock, I realize that was your commitment early, but we ought to come back, and you should, I think, ask staff to say, Sid, what do you think of the small school closures for collapsing the original Gates Foundation thing? Or do you want to say more about the, the Gate program, or about OSIL, or about the SIO? I think you ought to hear some of that.
Yeah, great.
And then, by the time we got to 5 o'clock, or whatever time we break, we've got a list, and we know we're going to go off. And if you say along the way, "This is off the table," finally, get it off the table so we can focus on what's important. But let me just share our general observations, and I'm being very sensitive to, we've got a leaf here in a little bit of time, but, you know, I just say a couple of things of the obvious, but I just, I think it's important that we plow some old ground again one more time. But, you know, we are really four weeks from 15 March, and that you do want to come back on the 9th of March, your next business meeting in that period, where you can look at your decisions about staffing, and your decisions about interim report. The PBB has provided $38 million in proposals, some interesting, some okay, some not good at all. But what we did do was we preserved the class size, as you noted. We did preserve all the school allocations, whether they be counselors, health, techs, librarians, whether or not we agree with the ratios. And I would be the first to say, I don't think that 1 to 500 kids is a counseling ratio that I would argue for in any circumstance. But we did that, we did preserve the VAPA, and a number of other key things. After we go through all those priorities, it's true that there were about 37 or 38 million dollars worth of, of things unfunded. But everything we talked about today, either directly or indirectly, affects kids. I don't care if it's, you know, the three-person office, and anything we do do is going to affect people. And that's why I asked Cheryl to bring this back up there. You know, when I look at it, it is a daunting number, and being honest with all of you, some of you are around the edges this morning, where, where, you know, I can get you 50,000, or I can get you 100,000. I have articulated since October, you have a mix of three things that I think have to do because the number's so large.
But the bottom line, people don't matter as much as the kids.
I understand that, sir. But we do have to touch staffing levels, we do have to touch programs, and we're going to have to get concessions of some kind in terms of personal entitlement, whether it's pay or health benefits. But where have we been? You know, over the last couple of years, we have organized, realigned, restructured much of the central office, and, you know, we are down to the levels that we thought should have been there a long time ago, but they're the levels that are needed to service the organization. And I come to, you know, an HR department that does hire and recruit and fill positions, an CFO department that does do the budgeting, and look at all the change that's coming. There will be readable budgets out there for principals, so that they can understand where their money is and where it has to be. I mean, as recently as this weekend, a four-day weekend, I had HR, finance, and IT in here, because we were converting to the first-time-ever position control program, where there's a unique number for every individual in this district. So all that is happening out there, but I do think you're caught up with, today's numbers, it's a 25 million deficit. And that's only if, only if you agree to everything that's above the 25. And I know that you have philosophical and fundamental differences with all of that, but we have cut all of the contracts, which are in some ways victimless, you're not dealing with people directly, and another $11 million in contracts comes out this year with the PBB. We have cut almost 500 people out of the central office, and, you know, when you make that comparison to the charter school, good conversation, I agree with you, but, you know, it's the people back at the, at that office that are going to do the standards and accountability assessments. Now, I am sure in a charter school, maybe one person does that, but we're talking about that popsicle stick example that Mrs. Nakamura had. 200 schools can't do standards and accountability, we can do it in a central office with a staff that has been cut, I think, by 25% in the last couple of years. So those are the trade-offs you have to make. I'm not sure we could go out to the other public sector entities that are suffering as bad, if not worse than us. We actually made overtures, overtures to the San Diego City Police. They are not only cutting their own staff, they're walking away because they don't have enough black and whites out there on patrol to respond to our multitude of alarms after working hours. So, you know, the trade-off is, we have our own police officers working a little bit overtime. So where do we stop with your priority of safe and secure schools? So every time we've tried to evaluate, we try to go back to your priorities, we go back to the ed code, and any other parameters that shape where we want to go. I saw some great ideas come from all of you, but as I was going through them, sometimes I ran into a contract, sometimes I ran into ed code, sometimes that's something that we've already done and taken it to a different level. So I'm not sure where we can go with some of that in the future. Small schools and closures, I do know, early in this cycle, going back to late summer, early fall, back before the real big bad numbers came out, we didn't have a whole lot of appetite for that. Now, fast-forwarding, clearly, things change. If we want to take a look at some collapsing of small high schools, certainly we can do that. That's, that's certainly akin to closing a small elementary school, and I think that's where Mrs. Nakamura was. Last year, we calculated, you can get about $450,000 net out of, on average, small elementary, because that, most of that money comes from a little bit of utilities, a little bit of maintenance, but it's the principal, or the custodian, or some of the boilerplate that goes with all of this.
What was that number?
About 450,000 is the number that we calculated last year for a small to midsize elementary school campus, and of course, when you get into...
Have them, you know.
Yeah, when you get into the large, middle, and high schools, I do remember the conversation at the time, it was very, very difficult. It wasn't worth the emotional or other kind of trade-off that comes with it, but I also recognize times have changed. So for, for all the good ideas, clearly, we could walk through them, but I think that maybe when we come back, everything from discussion of, what do we do next with small schools, to the IMC, we can go around the table, and that's why I've tried to make this a little bit more intimate today, is bring the experts here. What don't you want us to look at, period, and move on? What do you want us to look at and continue the discussion? I think that's where we have to go now.
Okay, well, why don't we break, and we're back at 2 o'clock?